All right. Okay, thank you, Zach. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I hope our collective Edina community is hanging in there in these challenging times. We do have a quorum, so I will call this meeting to order. Tonight is Monday, May 18th, and because this board meeting is being done virtually, all votes will be done via roll call. We have all seven board members present, along with Superintendent Schultz. Superintendent, please introduce who was present from the administration and then review our agenda for this evening.
Yes. So for the administration tonight, we have John Tope, Director of Business Services, who is in-house here with Erica and me, David Wright from Transportation, Deb Richards from Teaching and Learning, we have Isa Puntchar, who's here from Teaching and Learning, and Katie Mahoney, who is Principal at Highlands, Mary Whitey in Communications, Randy Smazel, Director of Teaching and Learning, Renee Baca from, I forget what school, but presenter tonight, I believe.
Cornelia.
Excuse me?
Cornelia.
Cornelia, that's right. Thank you. And Steve Butner from Technology, Valberg, from Community Ed, Zach Horn is our technician tonight. For the agenda, you have approval of minutes. We have excellence in action tonight, which will surprise people with a little later on. On consent, we have personnel recommendations, some consent of technology purchases, and some transportation leases. And then also for community ed leases, as well as some staffing adjustments in community ed. We have a presentation tonight from American Indian parents on our American Indian education work. For discussion, we have the art, music, and curriculum review. We will present and have a discussion on the strategic plan for Edina Public Schools from 2020 to 2025. We have policies 510 and 713 to talk about. Randy, Julie, and I will give an update on where we're at with distance learning and also on meals and also on childcare. And then for action, you have long-term facilities maintenance for 287, also technology purchases, end-of-year grading reporting recommendations, which the board talked about in a previous work session, and then there's policies 439 and 530. And then under information, we have the enrollment expenditures and some policy appendices. And also some information, the board policy committee will be having a discussion on the human resources, community name change. So with that, Chair Allenberg, is the overview of the agenda.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Schultz. My first order is to approve the minutes from the April 20th work session, April 20th regular meeting, April 30th special enclosed meeting, and April, I'm sorry, May 4th and May 11th work sessions. Do I have a motion to approve these minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We will now vote by roll call to approve the meeting minutes. Allenberg? Aye. Fox?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Michelson?
Aye.
Shaw?
Aye.
Wallen Teedman?
Aye.
Thank you. The April 20th, 30th, and May 4th and 11th meeting minutes are approved. I'm going to hand it over to Superintendent Schultz now, who's going to highlight something at Highlands Elementary School for us.
Okay. During the past school year, Highlands Elementary welcomed a four-legged helper to their midst. A fifth grader, Danny Martin, began bringing his service dog, Nappa, to school each day. No one was quite sure what to expect and how it would work, but in the end, Nappa helped his buddy Danny and all of Highlands to open their minds and harsh new definitions of success. Got a video to show and share with the community and with the board regarding that. So Zach, can you kick that off?
Nappa is my service dog. Likes having her at school.
Now, you always have hope that the community is going to embrace differences, embrace challenges, and I really hoped that that was how Highlands would react, both the students and the families of Highlands, and it all came true. We've had no issues with Nappa at all. The community has supported it 100%, and I would say even more so, kids have done some writing assignments about Nappa, they've done some research projects to learn more about service animals in our community. And so it's just been really heartwarming and wonderful to see how much the community has invested in that dog and in turn Danny.
She walks with me on highway. I try to slow down.
How are you today?
The benefits I see with Nappa here at Highlands are two-sided. So the school in general has really risen to the whole event of it. They're respectful of Nappa and her doing her job, but they're excited about her, so it's fun for them to see her. She's a well-known mascot around the building now, so that's been really fun. The benefits for Danny is starting to grow is responsibility around Nappa. I've certainly seen a change in his ability to give her commands that he's been practicing, help her to follow the job that she's supposed to do.
My favorite thing about having Nappa at Highlands is that it makes Danny happy and more confident, and it boosts his self-esteem, and it just creates an overall better environment for everybody, including Danny and Nappa.
One of the most surprising things about having Nappa in our classroom is that there are other kids who have really started taking on leadership roles with that, which is really quite amazing, and I think going in, we didn't know at all what it was going to look like. And just finding how Nappa's presence in the classroom is just calming in general, which is really nice, but also that the kids completely forget that she's there.
Danny with Nappa, I see that he's calmer and doesn't get stressed out as much.
Danny's biggest benefit with Nappa in my mind is to be connected in the classroom and grounded to do his work, and I also think it's making him improve on his communication skills. I know I've really driven him hard on learning the commands that he's going to know for the rest of his life and really pressed him to make him do those commands, and I think that's super important, and I think that's really great.
When I see Danny and Nappa at school, I feel that Danny's happy and he's learning survival skills.
Nappa has changed our school by helping Danny stay calm, probably more positive attention, and Danny's a lot happier now.
First of all, like as a teacher, I see him walking down the hallway, and he belongs here, and Nappa's a huge piece to that. I think before, he was a student with a para, and now the students see him as a person with a canine companion. It normified him in a lot of ways. He belongs. Nappa's there connecting him and reminding him to stay calm, to be present, and to do his job. That's amazing. It's fun to see him learning every day.
It was important for me to support the family in their curiosity and wonders around how a service animal could be used in a school. How could it support their son in his goals and really help him to become more of an integral part of our community? We are really excited with the results. We've learned so much, and we feel like Danny and Nappa are really ready for the next step to middle school.
That was great. We're now going to move on to our community comments section, and we're going to read community input we have received via agenda items for tonight's board meeting. Just a reminder that we're asking the community to email the board, and we'll read a representative sample of emails pertaining to board agenda items during our virtual board meetings. We did receive one email regarding the proposed grading requirements, and John Tope is going to bring this for us.
Thank you, Chair Allenberg. This letter is from Shabon White. She writes, Dear School Board Members and Dr. Schultz, I am writing about the potential grade policy change that is up for discussion on Monday. I have two children who work very hard and take school seriously. They love school. You might even say it is their sport, as schoolwork is the thing they care about most. My daughter is a fourth grader at Normandale and is in both Advanced Math and Language Arts. She has four core teachers. She has been working so hard on her assignments, like writing her first persuasive essay for ALA, which she has worked on until 5:00 PM for several afternoons. She is up at 8:00 AM before we get up, and she does extra work, writing prompts, additional IXL, and so on. She is the kind of kid who always wants to do her best work. When she overheard me saying there may not be elementary grades, tears, and asked, so why are my friends and I working so hard? I have to agree with her. I think it would be terribly unfair to change the policy to remove the option of earning the elementary grades of 1 through 4. She deserves the grades she has earned, no matter what they are. She has been working so hard to improve, and as her parents, we want to be informed of her progress. Her grades will let us know if she is on track or has been struggling in other ways we didn't realize. I do understand that some students have had a harder time learning at home for myriad reasons. Some parents may feel this is a lost semester. Trust me, it has been tough for all four of us to be at home trying to do schoolwork and work remotely. Distance learning is not ideal, but it is what we have to do now in the interest of keeping our students, staff, and community safe, and we are trying to make the best of it. My kids have been working hard because we want to honor all the hard work the teachers have put into preparing these lessons and lectures. There may be students who do not complete their schoolwork every day, but for kids who are doing their work daily, removing the grades will simply negate all their hard work. We ask that you add the "in" no-grade option to the grading scale as you are doing for the middle and high school students. That way, the students who need more time or are struggling aren't penalized, but students who have completed their assignments will see the number grades that reflect their work. We will be honoring both scenarios. This will also give the district more data for how distance learning is or isn't working if e-learning continues in the fall. Thank you for your time. I wish you and your families good health. Shabon White.
Thank you, John. Okay. We're going to move on to our consent agenda. Is there anything that anybody would like to remove from the consent agenda? If not, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Next one.
We will now vote by roll call to approve the consent agenda. Allenberg? Aye. Fox?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Michelson?
Aye.
Shaw?
Aye.
Wallen Teedman?
Aye.
The consent agenda has been approved. Now moving on, we have a presentation from American Indian parents who are in March, and I apologize that the circumstances prevent these families from being here in person, but hopefully they're able to watch online. We have Randy Smazel and Isabel Puntchar, who are here to present this for the board.
Good evening, Chair Allenberg, Superintendent Schultz, school board members, and community members. In a second, I'll introduce our presenters this evening, but I just wanted to give you a little bit of background about American Indian education in Edina. And this really comes out of, some of the lead work from the Minnesota Department of Education really comes out of the Every Student Succeeds Act, and inside of that, Every Student Succeeds Act is a provision supporting our American Indian students in our schools. The vision statement put forth by the Minnesota Department of Education is that American Indian students will reach their full potential within the school communities through meaningful, equitable, and targeted educational experiences that affirms and values their unique cultural identities. As you'll learn from Isa this evening, there's about 25 students who claim American Indian status in our school district, and at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Isabel Puntchar, who is our Teaching and Learning Specialist for elementary curriculum other than math and science at the elementary level, and she also addresses world language, and she has been a contact and a coordinator for our American Indian education this year. And then Renee Baca will also join Isa, and Renee is a fifth grade teacher at Cornelia, and they will be talking about some of the activities that have occurred inside of the school district over the past year, and a little bit about our American Indian parent group that meets periodically throughout the year, and give a little bit of background for the board around some of these important services that occur in our district. So with that, I'll turn it over to Isa and Renee.
Good evening. I am going to present this so that everybody can see it. Can you see the presentation?
Yep.
Okay. So my name is Isabel Puntchar. As Randy said, I'm the Curriculum Coordinator for Edina Public Schools for elementary content areas, and this year I oversaw the American Indian Education Program. The presentation you're going to see was created by a group made up of parents, students, and staff who identify as American Indian, and they are known as the American Indian Parent Advisory Council. So any district that has 10 or more American Indian students receives funding from the Minnesota Department of Education and must have one of these APAC groups, as we call it. This year, we received a little over $22,000, and these funds are designated to remove barriers, to help American Indian students be successful in school, and as Randy said, they also align with the World Best Workforce Plan. So the grant that we received mostly is spent on opportunities for students, and I want to give you a few examples. Most of the money that we have in scholarships is spent on things like camps, music and art lessons, sports, tutoring, AP testing fees, all sorts of things. And any American Indian family who's interested in support between the end of the school year by June 1st can email me, and then I will see what we can do. In the next slides, I'm going to highlight a few of the past opportunities that we've been able to provide for students. So last summer, Betsy Bagley, who was an eighth grader this year, attended a service learning camp in Costa Rica. She worked in an animal sanctuary for 10 days, and in addition to learning about Costa Rican culture and daily life, when I talked to Betsy, she said the highlight was that she made friends from across the United States. So it's quite a wonderful experience for her. And I'm going to turn it over to Renee, and Renee, excuse me, Renee, just tell me when you're ready to move to the next slide.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Pujou, thank you for having me here. My name is Renee Baca. I am a fifth grade teacher at Cornelia. Outside of my roles, responsibilities, and duties as a fifth grade teacher, I also took the responsibility of educating our K5 students, and we are also in the process of incorporating our sixth through eighth middle school students with our cultural club, if you will. All of us come from different backgrounds, Anishinaabe, Apache, Dakota, Lakota, Ojibwe, and Upek, but we come together, we come together as one people. We come to learn about respect, love, truth, bravery, wisdom, generosity, and humility. These seven teachings, which are known as the Seven Grandfather Teachings, not only do I incorporate with our American Indian students, but also with my kids in the classroom on a daily basis. If you do some research on the Seven Grandfather Teachings, it almost aligns up with our, my gosh, I'm forgetting, give me a second to remember, it'll come back to me. Second step program that we run in the elementary schools, we teach kids about these fundamental basic responsibilities we have as students and as human beings. That being said, we come together as one people to bring honor back to who we are as a people. Too often, we forget and/or we're lost, or our culture is dismissed because of the unknown, and students in the classroom, outside of my American Indian students, begin to take pride in who they are based on their culture and where they come from. They weren't recognized, all people that walk into our building, into our classrooms, and in targeted lives. And being a part of this is a great honor, and I really want to extend my gratitude to the board, to the superintendent, to my principal, Principal Masika, Isa, Randy, for allowing this to happen. My counterpart, Courtney, who works at the high school, does similar work with her group of students in 9 through 12 in preparation for what's to come for them as they get older through the district. Some of the things we've done last year, you can see the photo here, students are working on their traditional breastplate, men's and women's breastplates, a little different in design, but serve the same purpose as a spiritual and protective piece for our soul, our body, our hearts. On the next slide was what we were working, began to work on this school year, was the students working on the medicine shields. Here you can see all our students, except for one, she was out of the country at the time. She is our Upek native student, very, very nice, intelligent first grader who attends, I believe, Normandale, I could be wrong, but here we have our students working together, coming together as one. As I mentioned, we all come from different backgrounds, Ojibwe, Lakota, Dakota, Apache, and Upek, but we come together to embrace who we are culturally, who we are as a people, and respect our background as one. And again, as I mentioned, we at times tend to lose where our culture comes from, and we bring in music, language, dance, the crafts we do with our students to remind them of who we are as one people, and to take pride in who they are and who we are. Not many of us are in the district, so it's good to be represented by a few, and I'm honored again to be a part of that, and as long as I am educated with the district, I will continue my strive with my students to help them succeed in this manner, and I am very proud of them. And I would like to say, migwesh, thank you for allowing me to speak to you for a moment to express the gratitude we have with the support of the district and the board with what we do with our students on a daily basis. So again, migwesh from the bottom of my heart and soul, thank you.
As Renee mentioned, Courtney Bokal, who is a teacher at the high school, leads a native club that is also co-led by Matilde Hardy, who is a junior this year. Courtney teaches facts at the high school, but she's also a member of the American Indian Parent Advisory Council. In the native club, students learn about seasonal traditions, how to balance that intersection of white and native identity, and they've also learned from elders in the community and have partaken in community activities. So in years past, these students have done riceing, they've marched in the May American Indian Parade, they went to the Sugar Bush to learn how to collect maple sap and make maple sugar, they learned about the ceremonial uses of tobacco, and last year, they made dream catchers and fleece blankets for elders. Matilde Hardy told us that she would like to expand the club's activity to include the Native community in Minneapolis. Her aunt, Louise Mattson, is the Executive Director of the Division of Indian Works in Minneapolis, and she works to support struggling Native members through education, food services, et cetera. And Matilde would like the Native Club to be able to volunteer at the food shelf at the Division of Indian Works and do some more work at local powwows. So that's something to look forward to, hopefully, next year. Each year, the juniors at Edina High School have participated in what is called the David Larson American Indian Immersion Experience. It is organized through North Hennepin Community College, and it consists of a semester-long college class with a five-day culminating bus trip, which is an experiential classroom where students gather knowledge from places, but also people. The pictures you see here are from the 2018 bus trip, since we didn't have any American Indian juniors last year that I could show you. And this year, with the statewide confinement, there are plans currently to modify the experience for students, perhaps by using virtual meeting platforms so that the students could meet elders and tribal leaders, and there could also be an option to postpone the trip until fall, but none of these plans, as of yet, have been finalized. Matilde Hardy is the only American Indian junior we have this year, but she reported that the class that goes along with this experience has been an eye-opening experience, and she said she's much more aware now of her cultural advantages and wants to learn more about her native heritage as well. American Indian seniors last year were presented with an eagle feather during commencement. That is a great honor, and it rarely happens even in one's lifetime. Prior to the ceremony, these seniors had learned about the importance and the meaning and the care of the eagle feather from Kevin Smokey Day, who is pictured here and who is an Ojibwe elder. Also last year, we had three seniors, and those three students, along with Courtney Bokal, were invited to present at the Native American and Indigenous Studies Association Conference, which was taking place all the way in Auckland, New Zealand. And at the conference, they shared their learning from their junior year's American Indian immersion experience with North Hennepin Community College, and they also had an opportunity to visit Maori homelands and schools, and reported this was the trip of a lifetime. They absolutely loved it. And I'm going to turn it back over to Renee, maybe to talk about these K-12 collaborations.
Thank you, Isa. Well, the collaboration we have here is, we took our students' sugar bushing last school year, in which students are taught in the traditional way how to harvest the sap from the maple trees. It's a process in which students must harvest the sap, I'm sorry, from the trees itself, bring it back in where it's collected, and then run through a serious process of heating process. And it is quite the experiment, if you will, to see the science behind how sap turns into sugar itself. It's quite the experience for the students and myself, which I've never seen before. Again, being from a different region of the US, the southwest area of Texas and New Mexico, sugar wasn't something we harvested, so it was an eye-opening experience for myself as well, to share this with our Ojibwe, Lakota, and Dakota students. Again, my hope, my dream is, as our students grow older from the K5 experience in my classroom, as they get older into the middle school, high school age-appropriate, they can do these things as well, where they learn more about their culture, their background, and how to cultivate something as important as sap to make sugar and other things with it as well. That was quite an experience, so I really appreciate it, being a part of that with Courtney last school year. And as Isa mentioned, unfortunately, we had a lot of things being canceled out because of the current pandemic we are facing. But that is my hope, and that is my desire, as we move forward with our students in the district. Thank you.
And, well, Renee, maybe you want to speak about this one with the fact that the high school students visited your group at Cornelia?
Yes, ma'am. Our seniors from last year came in a couple of times during our after-school program to help our younger students work through their breastplates, and then also to share with them what to expect as they get older, running, going through the Edina Public School System. Picture here, I might mispronounce her name, Kaia. She's our Upek student from Alaska, a very bright, beautiful young student in first grade currently, pictured here with one of our seniors. And it was an interesting experience for our younger kids as well, for the older students to make a connection with each other and to look at each other and say, oh, I am like you, we come from the same people, and then to recognize that the district supports what we do for them. And having the older students come in, the seniors, and help the students beat their breastplates and their feathers was quite an experience for our young kids to see their older students help them as well, and it was quite a coin experience for them to see that.
So as you can see, we've had many opportunities for students in the past, and the pandemic this year has And the pandemic this year has cut short a lot of these plans. But we hope that these examples give you an idea of the kinds of opportunities students may have next year and in the future. It's important that all of our students see the impact and the significance of American Indian people in the curriculum that we teach. And it's critical for American Indian students to see themselves in what we teach. And I just want to talk a little bit about the fact that the state of Minnesota has recognized this and has put legislation in place to ensure that in our standards, the perspectives of Minnesota American Indian communities are included. In the past, the Minnesota standards in all content area have included benchmarks about the contributions of Minnesota American Indians to the field of study. So with the 2019 science standards, the knowledge about American Indians has been elevated to what we call an anchor standard, which means that it is now a K-12 emphasis instead of isolated benchmarks. The Science Anchor Standard asks students to research and to describe the methods that were used by Minnesota American Indians to explain scientific phenomena and to design solutions to problems. It's a standard that is specifically addressed in grades one to four and in grades six, seven, and at the high school in earth science, chemistry, and life science. And every set of standards from now on that is being revised will include a similar anchor standard. So again, this isn't just important for American Indian students, but it's important for all of our students to realize the connection that they have right here in Minnesota with native people. The APAC, or the American Indian Parent Advisory Council, is tasked with making recommendations to the school board. This group meets every month, or has met every month throughout the year until we no longer met. But in the time that we met, the group brought up some recommendations that they would like us to bring forth to you on behalf of Jeff Carlson, who is the APAC chairperson, and Diane Begley, who is the APAC co-chair. So middle school recommendations. In middle school, the APAC members recommend that an advisory, be it an advisor, sorry, be assigned to coordinate cultural activities and serve the cultural needs of native students. As Renee was mentioning, that we're trying to include middle school students, but we don't have a person specifically at the middle school to coordinate that effort. And that has sort of hindered that process. But if we could have an advisor at the middle school level, it would ensure not just a continuation from the elementary program, but also more opportunities to collaborate with elementary and high school groups a few times during the year. At the high school level, the APAC strongly recommends a multi-grade advisory for American Indian students at Edina High School. Because these students sort of feel, there's so few of them, they feel lost in such a large building. And that's a need that they've communicated with Courtney. So again, this is a strong recommendation, as they wanted me to say. We would also like to see that the native club be listed on the Edina High School Activities website. Currently, it is not there. And it would be great if there could be a linked page that could showcase some of the events and opportunities that are available to students, to encourage more students to get involved. And the APAC group also recommended that a native student be invited to sit on the mosaic console at the high school. Renee, did you want to speak to the general recommendations? Or would you rather I let me continue? It's either way.
Would you mind continuing? I'm sorry, I wasn't aware of these recommendations. Thank you.
Oh, that'll be fine. Yep. So generally, overall, for K-12, the recommendations include intentionally developing curriculum that reflects the heritage of American Indian students and also recommending the support and growth of diversity of Edina staff. And finally, the last recommendation of this group would be to request that current policy be amended so that seniors are allowed to wear the traditional regalia of a beaded cap during their graduation ceremony. Currently, seniors who graduate from Edina High School are not allowed to alter their cap in any way. And it might interest the board to know that in some states like Montana, there has been legislation passed making it unlawful to ban traditional regalia, specifically the beaded caps during graduation ceremonies. So we're hoping that Edina can be at the forefront of honoring the heritage of our American Indian graduating seniors by letting them showcase a beaded cap. So that comes to the end of our presentation. As Renee said, Miguash, thank you for listening and for supporting these students and supporting the work that we do to help them be successful in school.
Thank you. I appreciate that presentation. Do any members of the board have any questions or comments?
No, but great. Thank you so much. Very informative.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Yeah, thank you very much. It was very informative. And I just was going to ask either John or Randy, what would be the next steps for having the administration comment and on the recommendations that have been sent to the board?
John, are you responding? Or do you want me to respond?
Why don't you go first? I'm just curious on what the state expectations are with it. I know they've got some expectations. That's what I'm not clear on.
Isa, do you know how the, any state expectations align or are part of these recommendations?
Well, most of the recommendations are internal to Edina. Like the advisor and the multi-grade advisory at the high school, those are internal policies. I'm not aware of any state mandates regarding things like the beaded cap for graduation. I'm just aware that in some states, they've passed laws outlawing, forbidding kids to have a beaded cap.
So I think what we'd have to do is identify where the recommendations align with policies. So if there's a policy related within the Edina policy that would go to policy committee. But if it's more of a practice or expectation by the high school, then I think that recommendation should be made to the high schools. So I think we just need to figure out where those recommendations need to be presented, Ellen. And I can work with Randy, Isa, and Renee on that.
Great. Thank you.
Great. Well, thank you. I appreciate you bringing, I apologize that it got delayed for March, but it's great information. It's very informative. So thank you so much for coming virtually to give this information to the board.
And if I, and if I could just add one more thing, that would be to thank all the parents who helped put this presentation together. It's hard to have everybody participate when it's a virtual meeting like this. But they were very excited about the opportunity to present their work to you and their recommendation. So thank you.
Great. Yes, thank you. Thank you to the parents. Hopefully, you're watching. So thank you. Great. So now we're going to move to our discussion items. And first, for our discussion items are the arts and music curriculum review with Randy, Caroline Lyndon, and Deb Richards. So Randy, I guess you're up again.
Okay. Good evening again. So we have a curriculum review cycle that sits in policy. And the intention of that curriculum review cycle, we've been working over the past few years to make sure that that cycle is in alignment with state standards. And when state standards are moving forward, sometimes that alignment is really tight. And sometimes things get adjusted, and it has to be adjusted as well to the state. The, I believe the arts standards right now are a little bit behind in their, I'm sorry, are a little bit behind in their posting or their vote on those standards in terms of putting them into legislation. But MDE has indicated to us to continue to move forward in our planning work around that. So what Deb and Caroline are going to talk a little bit about, Deb's going to give a little bit of background about the arts standards and the legislation and the direction that that is headed at the state level. We have not implemented that yet. But we wanted to discuss a little bit this evening the potential impact of that and what we believe we'll need to do in terms of a next step. Caroline has been facilitating, as part of the standard review process, the music standards and working with the music educators around their needs for curriculum updates, which are typically music or pieces of music, but also equipment and instruments as well. So she's going to present some of the results of that study. And then what we would ask the, from the board this evening is to consider how the new arts standards may impact programming, but also how this request for music materials will support the continuous improvement of music programming across the school district. So with that, what I will do is introduce Deb Richards. She is our teaching and learning specialist in charge of talent development, but also supports curriculum reviews and other work inside the district. And Deb has stepped forward to help with the arts standards review. And then Caroline Lyndon is our literacy coordinator across the district. And next year will be a dean at Creek, I'm sorry, Countryside Elementary School. She will be an elementary instructional dean. So we're very excited for Caroline continuing in Edina in this next role. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Deb Richards to talk a little bit about some of the legislation coming forward around the arts requirements that schools are going to be required to meet starting in the 21, 22 school year. So Deb?
Yeah, thank you. So I'm hoping that you all had a chance to kind of read the report. And so Caroline and I are not going to go through the report, but basically, we want to summarize what the review process was, which is basically phase one. And then just kind of share with you some of the learnings that we've had. And again, this is for discussion just so that you are aware of potential changes to programming and courses that might come in phase two. So with that, we had teacher representatives from the arts that have been meeting for the last two years. And they completed phase one of the curriculum review process. The team, teacher teams, were from the areas of music, visual arts, theater arts, and dance. And they were charged with the following tasks: to review and analyze the new standards, to conduct an audit of current courses to determine any necessary changes, make adjustments to curriculum to align to the new standards, identify needed materials and resources to meet the new standards, and to pay order, place orders for music in the summer of 2020 for fall implementation. So that was the process. And so this is what we've learned so far, is that according to the current timeline, full implementation is required by the 2021, 2022 school year, which means that we have to have changes to any of our courses ready for registration by January of 2021. We learned that there are now five art areas. And that includes dance, media arts, music, theater arts, and visual arts. So oftentimes, when we say the arts, we think of visual arts. But visual arts is only one of five of the areas. And media arts is the new area that's been added. And it's very similar to, the standards are very similar to like graphic design, that gives you reference. The other thing that's significant that we've learned is that the new standards are no longer banded. And this particularly impacts the middle school. So in the past, if there was a standard, we would say the standard had to be met within grades six through eight. Now that they're late, now they're laid out by grade levels. So we have standards at sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade. So this creates a unique grade level experience in each of our arts area. Another thing we've learned is that most teachers only have licenses to teach one or two of the five arts areas, which makes interdisciplinary programming really difficult. For example, a dance class can only be taught by a teacher with a dance or a dance and theater license. So a teacher licensed in music and other arts areas can't teach dance. And we also know that our FIAD teachers can't teach dance as well. We know that students in grades K through eight must be offered opportunities in three art areas. And they have to meet the standards in two. So currently, at the elementary level, we offer music and visual arts. So currently, we're offering two areas. So the change will be we'll have to offer three areas, although the students don't need to meet the standards in all three, but only two. One art credit is required for graduation at the high school level. Must include all of the required arts standards and benchmarks in at least one art area. In high school, the teacher of record must have the appropriate licensure or endorsement in order for students to earn an arts credit. That is important, that teachers representing all five art areas are involved in the review process. Again, in the past, I think the focus has been on music and visual arts. Lastly, before Caroline talks about phase two of the curriculum review process, we would both like to thank the teachers who have participated in the review process. We had 20 music teachers, six visual art teachers, one theater and dance teacher, one Project Lead the Way teacher, and one fax teacher. Thanks.
Unmute.
Thank you, Caroline. Caroline, before you start, I think I've made sense of the board asking any questions they have about this first part, about the standards themselves, and then move into the music-specific portion. So I just wanted to see if board members had questions or comments about what Deb was speaking about, about the, about the correct standards update themselves on the whole before we went specifically into the music. I personally do, but I was trying to be kind, to open it up to other people first. So. Well, I guess I'll ask mine. So. So Deb, could you clarify for me what it says? And maybe I'm just missing something in the reading. What it says that students will need, let me see where I can find it. It says that, it says that basically that they need two art credits annually. Are those two half semesters or the full years?
So I think school districts can decide the amount of time allotted, assuming that all of the standards are met.
Okay.
It's really up to the district's discretion to determine how long it will take to meet the standards.
And maybe you haven't gotten this far into it, but based on your analysis of the middle school standards, do you feel that they're more geared towards full-year classes or half-year classes? I'm trying to gauge the impact to our middle school schedule specifically, is what I'm trying to understand.
So I think the middle school is primarily impacted by not banding the grade levels together. And I think also that in the past, students might have taken like two, like a choir and a band, like two musics. And so now there's going to be that distinction that they have to take two classes from two different areas. So if they take a full year of band, they're still going to need an additional art area that they meet the standards in.
But it could potentially be a semester.
Correct.
And so you guys are looking into those different options right now? How that would work?
Yep. We conducted an audit. I think it's in the report. It kind of, it kind of gives you an idea of what the state of Minnesota requires, what Edina Public Schools requires, and then the variety of electives that we have. And so we're going to need to make sure that students have that opportunity to engage in two different art areas at each grade level.
Okay. And then my other question, I guess, is more for Randy. And I know that I'm trying to give sensitivity and grace to the Department of Education as well. But are districts going to, for both this curricular update and the science curricular update, I know they have deadlines. But given, given what districts are going through right now with distance learning and trying to figure out everything that's going... going on next year, do you anticipate the Department of Education is going to push back the deadlines for districts implementing all of these things on top of trying to figure out everything else districts are trying to figure out just to implement education for their students? Is my?
Yeah, I think that's a great question. I don't know that we've received any guidance from MDE on a slowdown in this particular area. I think that they're preparing to vote on it in terms of legislation and then that would kind of cement the statute around the adoption of these standards for the state. If we speak to science, they've given us a pretty big runway for science. They've given us basically a five-year implementation timeline. So we feel like we have some time there. So far, this one's a little bit tighter now with the expectation of these standards being implemented 2021, 22. So we haven't received any guidance that that's not the case, but certainly that would ease some things up on the, on the side of the district. So I guess we'll, we'll wait and see if that happens at this point.
Okay, thank you. Those are my questions.
I have, I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
And, and I'm just wondering, does the state require that they, that the standards are met in independent courses? Or can the standards be met as units within, embedded within another course? For example, you can name and almost any of the ones that we're currently offering in seventh grade, like art and the digital world, could one of those units be a media arts unit taught by a separate teacher to come in for that unit? But we wouldn't need to necessarily build out a whole semester in order to meet or fulfill that standard?
I think that's a great question, Ellen, and it's probably one yet to be answered. But our, our thinking, at least originally and looking at the standards is that they're going to be more than a unit to complete them. So that might be challenging. One of the other things that we wondered about, and we actually talked to some folks at MDE about is, you know, could we integrate these standards with other standards? And for example, could dance be incorporated into physical education as part of the physical education curriculum and then be, be achieving both the physical education and the dance standards? And the response back from MDE was only if the PE teachers also held a dance license can you do that? Otherwise they're not considered highly qualified for teaching that particular content area. So I think those are things yet to be explored. The degree to which we could integrate would be dependent upon licensure. The length of the time needed to ensure that kids are proficient on the standard probably has, is yet to be defined and explored for all of those standards. And as Deb mentioned, that will be phase two that would come in the fall in front of the board is to look at, okay, we've, we've now really unpacked these and we've put together a proposal for how we would deliver these in Edina. And here's what that looks like in terms of course options. So that, that will be the part next. What we're trying to do tonight is just bring awareness to the board and the community that this is out there. And there's going to be some additional pieces coming around it and, and it's going to have some impact. We, we're not sure exactly how much yet. Deborah, Caroline, is there anything you want to add to that?
Yeah, actually, unless there's any more questions, I was going to just briefly go over what will be part of phase two, which some of the pieces that you've actually asked about and discussed will be coming up. But are there any more questions before I begin?
I do have a question and that is just some clarification at the top of page three. A full year of performance music orchestra band choir will no longer be sufficient to meet arts requirements in grade six through eight. So to spell that out, does that mean a child who is in band in eighth grade, who previously would have taken a, a different course will no longer be able to do that because that will be displaced? That we will have one less elective, in other words, for students to take? Is that one of the implications of this?
It, it could be.
Again, those are the kinds of impact that phase two will begin to study when we come back in the fall. So things like that. So we haven't determined exactly what the impact of those requirements will be, but there are definitely going to be some programmatic changes potentially.
I can just anticipate some pushback in the community from that. Families that have kids who are really dedicated to music and putting a lot into it and they feel that their child is learning musically through the band and they would like to dedicate extra time to another course and now they can't. So I'm just sensing that we might want to think about that.
Absolutely.
And I'm, I'm really thinking that the media arts might be something that's really engaging for middle school students, but that is a new area and we don't have any course options at this point. If you have a visual arts license, you can teach media arts. So again, these are all things that we're going to do in phase two.
Okay, thanks.
Go ahead Caroline.
Okay. So the goal, the goals of phase two, thanks for asking those questions because it led right into my next segment. So those pieces will be discussed during phase two. And as Deb said before, we would want to make sure that any programmatic changes will be ready for you by December so that you would have a heads up about that and that they could be then ready for registration in January if there's any changes required. And then if there's any other resource orders for the other arts areas, those will be placed a year from now in the summer of 2021. So that was an outline of phase one and phase two. And I'm going to tell you a little bit more in depth about some of the work that the music department has done over the last two years. So the music department was actually able to finish all of their analysis. They were able to determine what kinds of purchases will be required to support both current programming and any future programming. And so that's what we're here to have you talk about tonight. Edina has a long history of offering rich musical experiences to its students. The music department is comprised of a large number of teachers. Therefore, four subgroups of teacher representatives were identified to conduct the process of curriculum review and they, their names are shown in the report. I'd like to personally thank them for participating in this process over the past two years. The groups met, they weren't necessarily exactly job alike, but there was a small group of band teachers, a small group of orchestra teachers, a small group of elementary classroom music teachers, some vocal music teachers, and then also connected with World of Music course at the middle school level. So each of those four subgroups met frequently and gathered feedback from their job alike colleagues throughout the process. And in addition, the entire music department, which is about 34 teachers, was able to meet on the February professional development days in both 2019, last year, and this past February in 2020 to bring back the thoughts, the analysis, talk through the curriculum documents, talk through any resources. Some brochures were created. So it was important that we tried to elicit feedback and that all voices from all of the music teachers in Edina were included in that process. So as a result, the music department is making recommendations for purchases that will support both current programming and any future programming that may result in any program changes if that is determined. The recommendations include purchasing instruments, repairing some instruments that they currently have, reharing bows, those of you that might play a string instrument, equipment. They also have done a really complete audit of their musical repertoire and are recommending for purchase of some new repertoire and other curriculum related resources. The budget items included in this report reflect each subgroups, those four groups I referenced earlier, their top priority items. And in appendix two, I believe you are able to see how much is allocated and how much being, is being requested again to support current programming and also future programming for our rich music department. Are there any questions?
Does anyone from the board have questions about this?
Again, I'd really like to thank the teachers involved. It's a lot to ask to be out of the classroom. I know each of the groups also put time in outside of their allotted days to ensure that this was done thoroughly and thoughtfully and will enhance our musical traditions and moving forward, programming moving forward. So thanks to all the teachers in the music department and especially to those serving on the committee.
So Randy, when do you anticipate having, and I apologize if you just told me this, but having an update to, to the board on the next steps and further impacts and what this will, I guess more granularity to what this will look like for the district?
Our next update will probably be in October as we'll be getting closer to where we think that next set of recommendations are. And then, and then we'll try to finalize that in the fall, as Caroline mentioned, prior to the registration guide materials being produced in January. So we'll be finalizing that with the board by December.
Okay.
And then materials for purchase for that phase two will then happen next summer.
So the financials that were listed tonight really would be at next summer?
The financials listed tonight would be for music as kind of a phase one and that would be for this summer. And that's really to support what we have in terms of music programming currently and then alignment to these next standards. And then in phase two will be the other arts areas and there may be at that time some additional need to look at kind of some phase two with music. What we looked at is really just kind of what were the absolute priority items for music right now?
So Randy, you're going to want the board to approve the funding next month and then you'll come back in with more information on the other part in the fall, correct?
Okay. Well, then I guess I do, I apologize, then I do have a question because I, I wasn't clear to me about the fund. So my, my one funding question is for the vocal slash world of music, it's not clear to me where the, I mean, that's a K to 12 funding stream and it's not clear to me where, and that's $20,000. And my question is for the middle school, it doesn't seem like we really understand what we're going to be doing with that set of classes. And I'm not clear if world of music is even viable or if it'll be a six month class or what we'll be doing with world of music. So my question is, is there, are we, are, is world of music asking for budget and money from us to purchase supplies for things for next year when we might be changing that class the following year?
That class specifically is only asking for about $300 worth of a digital subscription called Note Flight, which is part of the creative creation, part of the music standard. So it's a very small fraction. So choral music is the bulk of that purchase and the bulk of that is repertoire, updating their repertoire along with some other digital music composition software. But the bulk is for vocal music, which is ranges from grade six through 12.
Okay. And is this $86,000 part of an existing teaching and learning budget?
Yes, we have, each year we build out a budget that aligns to the curriculum review cycle. So this is, this is definitely within our planned budget allocation for this curricular areas of study. And so it's, it's all budgeted for at this point.
It is? Okay. All right. Thank you. Sorry, I apologize, I didn't.
Oh, that's good.
Okay, question. Thank you. All right, thank you guys. I appreciate all the work you put into this.
Thank you.
We'll look forward to seeing you guys in October. I'm going to hold you to that October date, so.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to strategic plan. So we have our long awaited strategic plan here. And I just wanted to sort of lay the groundwork for the, any community members that are watching tonight that we have two different documents up for discussion tonight. One is a draft of the actual strategic plan, and this includes the proposed mission, vision, values and beliefs for the school district, as well as five priority strategies, which are advancing academic excellence and growth, ensuring an equitable and inclusive school environment, foster, fostering a positive learning environment and whole student support, developing leadership throughout the school district and engaging parents, school and the community. The second is a document is a Gantt chart that shows the timing and prioritization of outcomes we expect to get out of the strategic plan. I'd like to offer a thank you to our administration for continuing to work on this while also guiding our district through the distance learning. From a timing perspective, this is being brought to the board for discussion tonight and hopefully we will be approving both the strategic, strategic plan and Gantt chart next month. We will then have an approved communications piece for the community in July. In addition to that, the board will be discussing the monitoring of the strategic plan in July along with a district data dashboard. That I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent Schultz and then open it up to the board for comments and questions.
So I'm just going to briefly make some comments about the strategic plan. First, I want to commend the school board for a thorough, relevant visionary. I found it, found it really collaborative at many levels. It was collaborative among board members, it was collaborative among administrators. It gave me the opportunity to collaborate and work with administrators, the direction for Edina Public Schools. And more importantly, it was collaborative among the community. I want to really thank Maria Hansen for having the skills and the vision to meet with many people in Edina Public Schools to develop this plan. The plan was not developed in isolation, wasn't developed in the boardroom. It was really developed among leaders as well as community members. And I, if you read through the strategic plan, there are words like excellence, which is at the center, health, collaboration, family, family partnerships, leadership. And even today, when I was in interviews today, other staff members brought up the, the language of the strategic plan. It has had its influence with individuals that want to be part of the Edina school system. Edina leaders mentioned words like academic excellence, equity, welcoming all values, welcoming all perspectives. They talked about learning environments. They talked about leadership. They talked about community engagement. They talked about data. All of these, these concepts, ideas and, and I would say initiatives that are, are laced within the strategic plan. So from this administrator's point of view, it's a very relevant plan for public education today. Over the next couple of years, I have presented with the board of the priorities of, of looking at the, looking at the total academic program. How do we continue to give rigorous programming to all Edina students? Looking at interventions, looking at our literacy program, starting out social emotional learning, communication, communications in beginning, the big job of putting together a new web, a new website and a new web platform, as well as beginning to organize and communicate our data in the system. So this is really exciting to, working with the strategic plan to be, begin to make this strategic plan, the vision of the Edina Public Schools real. So I look forward to working closely with you over the next years to complete this plan, implement and complete this plan.
Great, thank you, John. So again, I just wanted to open it up to board members and. So again, I just wanted to open it up to board members and get your comments or questions. So. Julie?
No, I was just going to make a comment. I, I wanted to echo what Dr. Schultz just said there, because I think that, I don't want to speak for Janie, but coming into this board, I know how much time and effort has gone into getting us to this point. So I just wanted to say thank you, because it's been years of work. I know, I feel really proud of it. I think it really does represent the community. And I just, I think it's, I think it is very relevant, especially in light of our current situation that we're finding ourselves in with our system kind of being turned on its head this last nine weeks. So yeah, I just wanted to echo that, but I have no additional changes or comments.
Thank you, Julie.
Thanks.
No one? Okay. I don't, I don't, I'm feeling a little stunned here on my end, so I don't, I don't know what to do. So, well, I guess if no one has any comments, then I am going to move to our policy review. I actually wasn't prepared to move on so fast, so I actually don't, I don't even know what to say. So we have two policies up for review, Policy 510 and 713. So I'm going to turn it over to the chair of our policy committee, who is Owen, and have him start us off on this conversation.
All right, thank you, Erica. We have two items to talk about today, Policy 510 and Policy 713 for discussion. The first, 510 is, in essence, removing obsolete language, dealing with the magnet school, the fair magnet school. And so we, that's, it's, that's basically what it is. And the much more substantive will be 713, which is proposing that we consider a pay-to-ride option in the non-transportation zone of the district. I think I first want to just open it up for any discussion about 510, because I think that this portion of our meeting will focus principally on 713, the transportation. So does anyone have any comments about 510? Okay. So we'll move on then to 713, and this has been our long-anticipated discussion about pay-to-ride in the non-transportation zone. And John Tope is here to give us a little background to this. And so, John, would you be the best person to represent this to, from the administration to us?
Yes, Director Michaelson, I'll give a brief overview. We have David White on the call as well to answer a very specific question. So if you want me to give a brief overview on the changes and then allow for questions and board feedback?
That'd be great.
That'd be great. All right, throughout the document, we are making some corrections, not corrections, but just making change, changes on his, her, to their. So you'll see that in the document itself on Policy 713. There's also some correction to appendices, but the major changes start on 713 dash, I think it's the top of three. Yeah, 713, three, I'm sorry, the bottom. This is where we start to make these changes, where we reference the appendix I at the bottom of 713, three, and then at the top of 713, four. We are deleting B, which obviously we would need to delete if we're offering a pay-to-ride option, and then renumbering the rest of the letters as we go down the list. And then the primary verbiage that we are placing in is in appendix I, and that is on 713-nine. So I'll make sure everybody gets to there. Once you're there, you'll see that we are changing at the, at the top, putting in the pay-to-ride section, "School district may provide transportation to students not eligible for regular to and from school transportation in accordance with Minnesota Statute 123B. 36," which does authorize charging a fee for service. Then we go through the listing in A, the transportation zones that we've set up, .7 or less for the K through five students, and 1.0 or less for the six, sixth through 12th grade students. Those are the ones that would be eligible for a pay-to-ride service. If you look at B, what we're trying to do with B is we're trying to put a fence around Parkwood Knowles neighborhood that has always been, because they're out-of-district students, but they're in the city of Edina, a fee for service. But we want to make sure that we charge the same fee for Parkwood Knowles area that we charged for this fee for service, pay-to-ride service for the rest of the district. So we're kind of highlighting that, saying that that is a designated pay-to-ride zone, and that the same fees are applicable to that area as they are to the other areas. Number C gives the transportation director authority, based on time, space, and equipment considerations. We do not want to add buses when we're implementing this pay-to-ride service, or if we do, we know full well going in that we will have to add a bus. But that is not our intent to begin with, and so we do give the transportation director that authority. D delineates that authority as it relates to number of seats per bus for K through five, six through eight, nine through 12 students. Set some limits on that, so that we don't go over that, so that we do not have to add bus, buses for this pay-to-ride service. E says they will be on a first-come, first-served basis, and that the applications will be stamped, date and timestamped. F delineates the fee, $350 per student with a family cap of 525. G provides some cancellation of services if our student limit is exceeded. H, if we cancel service due to lack of space, which says we'll prorate that reimbursement, that refund back to the family. Here and I would get into when we need to have the information from the family. So again, we're trying to, say, in a normal year, pay-to-ride notices will be sent out the first week of June for the coming school year with a deadline of July 15. The pay-to-ride form will also be posted on the transportation webpage after the deadline of July 15. No new applications will be accepted until two weeks after school starts. People may wonder why we have to start setting up bus routes after July 15. The drivers have to know what those routes are, practice their routes, and so forth. So that's why we want that date in there. J, "Transportation may be provided to students normally not eligible when the walk path within a school's attendance area exhibits, exhibits an extraordinary hazard area." And that, that again, would be determined by the transportation supervisor. It's my understanding that we have a few of those in the district. So that is the bulk of the changes as it relates to Policy 713. If you look back on page, it's 713 dash, it's ways back here. Oh, right at the end. 713 dash 24, you'll see, this is labeled appendix six, this is the pay-to-ride transportation form, need some information from the parent, and then the student name. We would like them to fill out a separate form if they have more than one student, give the name of the school. And I did put this in here, that the fee of $350 per student is the same whether they just selected AM or just select the PM, time for their students to be picked up. The rest, I think the form is fairly self-explanatory, and then we have the pay-to-ride fee scheduled at the bottom as a marker. And we are going to set this up, we're working with Director of Technology Steve Butner, so that we can possibly have these parents set this up and pay for this in Infinite Campus. So once we get that finalized, we may edit this form a little bit, we might have a hyperlink that brings them right over to Infinite Campus, and then they can sign in, and they can pay the fee online. So with that, that's most, that's most of the changes in the policy. We do have a couple of changes that we'd add to our transportation webpage on bus stops, eligibility area, all defining the pay-to-ride, and then on the back, a separate pay-to-ride option, about what, what is the approval process and how to apply. So just information on the transportation webs, webpage that highlights the pay-to-ride option, and what the requirements are for them to apply for that. We did do a survey. We got, I think it was 56 or 57 responses out of about 400 parents that we sent the survey out to, so not a very good response as far as saying, yep, I want my student to sign up for this service, and I'm willing to pay a fee. We didn't ask for the fee at this time, at that time, obviously, because we just wanted... What our plan is, is we would like to send out, and work with Mary Whitey in Communications, send out two letters, one to the Parkwood Knowles area, just to make sure that they are informed that the fee is going from 160 to the 350, and then two, a second letter out to all of the parent students in the .7 or less and the 1.0 area or less, so that they have one final time to say, yes, I would like to have my students signed up for this, and I'm willing to pay the fee. So I'll stop there and take board member questions and comments, and if you have a question for Director of Transportation, David White.
Great.
So John, I had a couple of questions, one of which is, this is time-sensitive, is it not? Because we, if we really need to move on this, we need to have our discussion tonight and the vote next month in order for this to become operational in the fall, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. The second question is, remind me, how did we settle on the 350 per student or the 525 for the family max?
The 350 is slightly under the cost of transporting one Edina student in fiscal year 1819. Implementing this fee in 2021 school year will be a couple of years behind in, as far as what the costs are per student. Not too far behind, but just a couple of years behind.
So this is going to be purely cost recovery?
Yeah, and I think this will be a very reasonable way to cover the costs, because as you get into the incremental cost of adding one more student to the bus, will be slightly lower than the three, the, the actual cost to transport that student for the 2021 school year.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions from the board?
Yes, I have one question. It's Ellen, and I'm wondering if it's 350 for the year, are we going to ever consider prorating it for half a year, or is it, I, I'm just, I think that that needs to be clarified in the paperwork.
The 350 is the fee for the year. There is language, Director Jones, I believe, and maybe David White can help me locate it fairly quickly. If they decide to cancel out, then they are not eligible to come back in on the, for the rest of that school year.
Okay, but for example, if there's no busing for the first three months next year, for example, or if someone moves in halfway into the year? I'm just, all of those situations are likely to come, there's going to be people who are likely going to ask, will you prorate this? And I think that we could make a statement whether or not we would consider that.
We, we, actually, we did talk about this, especially with the pandemic situation, that we may not be transporting students in the fall in that form at the end of the transportation policy. We could put a prorated per month form in there.
I think that, I personally think that in a, this situation, it makes sense to say something like, if school doesn't start, we will prorate it based on that. I don't necessarily want to get into a situation where we off, we have to prorate if someone comes in. I think if, if there's an obvious, like someone moves in halfway through the school year, to give them like half a fee, I don't want to put you guys in a situation where if someone signs up six weeks into school, we then have to prorate for that. I think if they're very obvious events like pandemic, or like Ellen's point, if someone moves in halfway into the year, something that, like that makes logical sense to me. I'm not necessarily comfortable offering a prorating as an option, just as a financial option.
Because if they, even if they do come in halfway during the school year, we may not have room for them to get on, on the bus anyway. So that has to be determined by the transportation supervisor first.
Right.
Before they can even get approval to apply for the pay-to-ride option. So I'm not sure if I'm answering your question, Director Jones, but I do agree with Chair Allenberg, that I think we need some discretion here for the transportation supervisor, and we certainly would try and be fair on that. If somebody's coming in halfway during the year, we can get, get them on a bus that we would probably only charge half the fee. If somebody's coming in six weeks after school starts, and we have been transporting since the beginning of September, I think we charge the whole fee.
Right. I, I, I think I'm tracking with what Erica is saying, in that I want to make sure that we're minimizing administrative time in handling this type of thing, and, and that it's, we consider this a, almost an annual decision for ongoing students, that if you want to be a part of this, you sign up in the fall.
Right.
And, and that if you don't, well, then that was your time, there was a, there's a sign-up time, and we would not prorate a fee after that sign-up time unless you're a new student, for example, or, or something like that.
Yeah. I think that makes sense, Ellen, and I think it makes sense maybe to come up with a date that says, like, in the event that school, we are not able to have in-person school by X date, we will prorate your fee. And I don't know what that date would be, but I think that makes sense.
David, if I may jump in for a second. I think what we want to try to avoid is someone, or people that come in after winter, or a certain period of time, hey, I'll sign up later on because of whatever, and then I'll get a discount. We want to try to get everyone signed up when school starts for the year, and not get into those certain situations. Well, I'll sign up after fall sports, or something.
Yeah. I, just a couple things, and this, some of this came from our policy committee meeting discussion. Ellen, your, your point about making it an annual decision, so what I like about this plan is I think it, I think it reflected the feedback from the survey, even though we didn't get a lot of feedback back. It did reflect some of what we got back, and also that task force that was put together that the, the different community members had come together. And I think in order to support, and correct me if I'm wrong, David, in order to make this work and be feasible and be fiscally responsible and efficient, we have to run it this way, right? We have to say, like, there's an open time, have to sign up, because what we don't want is disruption on the school bus with the students, and then also, David, re, having to reroute or having to do extra stops, or whatever that looks like throughout the year. So I think that, I just wanted to add that piece, because I think that was part of our discussion with this option, in order to make it work, is that we were going to need to really be tight with, with those parameters. So would, do you agree with that, David?
Yeah, I mean, the hope is, like, say, we could get everyone to come on board before July 15. And like I say, if we get a student moving in, we can understand that part.
Right.
But trying to avoid people opting in and out whenever they feel like it. Hey, well, I'll opt out, it's spring now, so I can get a refund.
Yeah. And I wouldn't, I, I don't know, we were... Yeah, and I wouldn't, I don't know, we're, Erica, you were talking about putting in, I don't know if you're talking about putting in this policy, some language about being prorated if school didn't start, but wouldn't that be just part of the communication about it, not part of this policy? Because if we're changing the policy?
No, I wasn't thinking about the policy.
Oh, okay, okay, thank you. Yeah, I did, I was, I just wanted to clarify that. Okay.
If we do have school not starting where we're transporting students, I think, as we use that Infinite Campus solution, for them to pay the $350, they're going to have to use a credit card to do that. And then what we would do, if we, let's say we didn't transport in September, October, then that would be two nines, I would say, that we would credit back to them, and we would be able to credit that back through Infinite Campus. I think that would be the most efficient solution if we don't transport kids once school starts, and I don't think that that would take a lot of administrative time to do so.
So I would just leave it, I'd like some kind of wording in there to honor this last discussion in the appendix, and I'm not really sure exactly how to phrase that, but maybe somebody in policy can take a look at that and propose that changing.
Which wording are you referring to?
Just the fact that there's going to be a registration period in the fall, you can sign up for this in the fall.
Well, I think, Director Jones, could I at least suggest something on that Appendix Six, which is the pay to ride transportation form? Would it be okay to put a schedule in there of what the refund amount would be if we didn't transport for one month or two months or three months then, so that they could see what that refund amount would look like, even though it's going to just be a credit back against their credit card? Because we do want them to pay the 350 fee upfront, and that's what we're asking them to do. So I think a refund schedule, if we don't transport right away in the fall, would be the way to go. Does that make sense?
Well, I actually wouldn't put, since this is going into an appendix to a policy, I'm not sure I would put that schedule in, just as we were discussing. I just, I think that it's, it would just simply need a little clarification on the fact that there's a registration period at the beginning of the year.
So we've got...
And I actually don't even know, I would just...
It's in there for July 15th?
Right, it's in the policy that way, so I don't, I think you're right, Director Jones, I don't think we want to do anything with the policy, so I apologize for saying that in Appendix Six. I think what we need to do is publicize that on the transportation webpage.
Yeah.
Is that all right? That makes sense.
Yeah.
I don't see the...
On, it's in the, the Appendix One, it's I, where it says, paid ride notices will be sent out the first week of June with a deadline of July 15th.
And I think there's a benefit, too, of having a date in the policy of the cutoff date, so it just stays. It doesn't move every year, like, it's, you know, it takes one year of kind of teaching that to our community and then saying, everyone knows by July 15th, you got to sign up for busing, right? So that doesn't change. So I think that that's a good date to have in there, or to have a date in there, so it stays.
Right, so we would promote with the potential fee refunds, then I would say we're under the pay to ride option on the transportation webpage. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Can this agreement be canceled? There's a question, but also, is there a refund if we don't transport kids because of the pandemic right away at the start of the school year? And then answer it. Does that make sense, board?
I think so. I think, because then it's communicated in the transportation place where we have, like, this is what it would look like if we weren't to go. So they know that we're thinking through it and not just saying, hey, everything's, everything's great, we're all going to get on buses. We obviously are thinking through all that. Right?
Agreed.
Yeah, the parents aren't going to go to the policy to get the information, so they're going to, and I think if you tried to weave it into the policy, you've already got language in there on, under H that talks about what you will not be reimbursed for. I think you just end up, if you try to add it into the policy, I'm not sure it wouldn't muddy it up. I think you guys did a great job of just keeping the policy very clear, and I think anything pandemic related should just be in the communication page.
So now, just point of clarification, we're not talking the policy, we're talking the appendix, is that correct?
Right.
Correct, yes, I meant appendix, I'm sorry, Owen, yes, I meant the appendix.
So just to clarify, what I'm gathering is we're not changing anything to the policy or appendix, we're suggesting that in any sort of communication, that we clarify basically H and I, which says that in, if school is late, we will prorate you and really clarify the August, the July, August, the dates during the summer and what this all means for people.
That's correct.
That's a clear clarification.
Thank you. Thank you, Matt.
So by the way, under that I, where it says with a deadline of July 15th, it should be clearer, so it's a deadline of July 15th to apply. I mean, it just kind of dies, the sentence. Well, I think I would revise I, just to make it clear that the deadline is for applying for the pay for ride. The other thing is J, what is J intended to apply to? Does that mean that people who are in an area where it's hazardous, they don't pay?
That was my question, Lenny, so I'm glad you brought it up.
I think I would ask Director White to address that, because I think him and I talked about it briefly, but I can't recall the answer. Mr. White?
Yes. So we're trying to put some language in there to help the transportation department. If, so we do have some streets that we do already consider hazardous, that we have always considered hazardous, so we're trying to get some language in there that just kind of talks about who can deem a street hazardous. If the public was asked, or a parent.
But then what? If it's hazardous, then do they pay? Do they not pay?
No, so any of the hazard streets right now, that would fall into a transportation area, so they would not pay.
So they'll be suspended from pay to ride?
Yeah, in, I don't foresee any new hazard streets being added on, but just trying to recognize the ones that are already out there.
So we already have hazard streets, David, and there are some students riding due to that hazard, hazard street designation?
Yes.
What, what do we consider? What are hazard streets?
Oh my gosh, that's a big question.
It is a big question. In particular, let's start with the biggest and we'll shrink down a little bit. Freeway, Highway 100, Highway 62, that kids will not cross the freeways or the bridges. France Avenue, Vernon Avenue, Gleason, because, some of it because of speeds and the safety of trying to cross the street. Those types of streets are what we deem hazard, that are higher, higher speeds, no crosswalks, potential railroad tracks, which we don't have a lot of in Edina. So those are hazards.
The only, the reason that I highlighted this to ask is I feel like it puts you in a situation where, to me, hazard is very subjective, and what I, as a parent, consider hazardous, you might not consider hazardous. And unless we have criteria that you can use, a, what you just sort of listed off to me, which is speed, crosswalk, train track, like, whatever those things are, which maybe we should add as bullets, I think we need to add objectivity to it, so it isn't a subjective phone call to David White to say, this street is hazardous, I don't want to pay and I want my students get picked up by a bus, because if not, I feel like we're going to end up in the exact same place that we are, which is we don't have any parameters around who gets a bus and who does not get a bus.
Yeah, we could definitely work on that pair, that J, and fine tune it some more.
Doesn't this control, David, already have criteria to determine that?
Not really. It's, it's kind of each district, but yeah, there is no set criteria to go off of.
Here's an unusual thought, could we, as the board, define what are the hazardous zones and put that into our transportation zone? So in the spirit of what Erica is saying, that you will not be put in the awkward position of having to defend what a hazardous zone is, and it's one or the other, you're in the non-transportation zone or you're not.
We could, I mean, we could list out our hazard areas right now as they stand. Some districts do that, some don't. List them out.
You know, what I'm in the favor, let me throw this out to everyone, what I'm in favor of doing is, apart from some of the language changes we're talking about in I and J, basically moving forward with this and considering that this is a launch of a new program, and we cannot fine tune it until we've actually experienced it for a year, and that we fully prepare to amend it next year at about this time, based off of real experience, and I think it's a massive step forward. And because I think we could talk about this for a long time, about what are hazardous areas, and the, a little background here with non-policy members, is that we did not get a chance to review the specific language. This has been sort of expedited, and so we have not had the leisure to go through it to the extent that we may have liked to. But after, after years' experience, I think we'll have a pretty good sense of how it's going for David, if he's getting a lot of pushback, and then we can, the community members can enjoy the benefits of this pay to ride, which in some fashion or another has been in pretty strong demand for a while. So what do people think about that?
I think, sorry, I was just going to say, I think that's a, that's a good approach. I like that idea. And I think, too, even though we hadn't had a chance to review the specific language that came out, all the topics and all the items that were discussed tonight that were added in, we had discussed pretty thoroughly in policy. So I just wanted to clarify that.
That's true.
Just because I, there were no surprises in there, I mean, everything, stuff that we had talked about, and I thought, actually, you guys did a great job of capturing that conversation and the direction that we thought that we were going, so. But I like, I think that's a great idea, Owen, we had talked about that, too, you know, launching this and assessing where we're at. So that would be my vote to do that.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, just, can we put that on the calendar for, to revisit this in six months or whenever, a year even? Owen, you can put that on the policy committee.
I think that's great, and it's my loss that Brian Bass is leaving because he can help me remember that, so.
All right, I have it written down. It's done.
It's on the call.
Done and done.
So what I'm hearing, the suggestion is just a couple of edits, or maybe just one edit to number, letter I, with a deadline to apply of July 15th.
Correct.
That's one thing I'm hearing.
Yes.
You know, if we want to delineate, you know, the hazard areas, we can do that, like David said, but I also agree with the board, we also need to say, well, it's a hazard area because of crossing Highway 100 or crossing a major highway. What is that criteria? And that's all that we put in there then, because if somebody else wants to make that argument that it's a hazard area, then they have to satisfy the criteria that's already in the policy and justify that that should be a hazard area. I think they will have trouble doing that, so I'm not against, I guess what I'm saying is I'm not against putting in why we're defining that as a hazard area, because I think we have very good reasons to designate those areas that, but I would like board feedback on that.
Yeah, that's what I was, oh, sorry, Erica.
I was going to say, my biggest concern is the hazard area concern, but I'm also comfortable, we've been operating like this for forever, so I'm also comfortable moving forward with this and working on the hazard area as sort of a parallel path, because I don't also want to rush into defining hazard areas and trying to get that done in a month to approve it.
Right.
So it does not make sense to me.
We're functioning fine.
Right. David, we're good.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say, Erica, so thanks for taking it from me, whatever.
Sorry, I stole your thunder.
So by the way, this says that notices are going to get sent out the first week of June, and we're going to vote on this on June 8th. So I think it'll be a little hard to send it out unless you're just going to send it out assuming we're going to approve it.
It's the first dish, the first dish.
First dish week of June?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, we had to throw some dates in there, not knowing exactly for sure how it was going to play out, so.
Why don't you just change it to send out by the second week of June?
We could.
And then it would be, in the future, you can send it out the first week, and this time we can send it out on the 8th or 9th.
Yeah.
So sent out by the second week of June?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, have we nailed down the clarifications on I? We've got apply at the end of the first sentence. Anything else?
No, just that second, the date for sending it out, then I think we're good.
Really one edit in I, then.
Right. That's what I'm understanding, yes.
Okay. Well, we've had a robust discussion, and unless we have any other considerations, I think we can move on past 7:13, and then we'll talk about this at our policy meeting at the end of May, I think it's May 28, 29. And David will have the language changed for us, and then we'll bring it up for vote, for action at our June policy, at our June regular meeting.
Great, thank you, and thank you, David and John Topp. I know this was a lot of work, but you guys are working on a lot of other stuff, so I appreciate you guys doing this in a short period of time.
Thank you.
Okay, we are going to move on to a short distance learning update with John, or sorry, Dr. Schultz.
That's fine, that's fine. So Randy and I are going to just hit the highlights for the public where we're at with distance learning, and Steve, just to hit the highlights, we're actually going to use the presentation we used last week with the board and their work session. So quick highlight, then we're going to shift and have Director Green talk a little bit about the food and the food that's been provided to the community, and also brief comments on childcare, and then just preview how we're looking at going into the fall. So it's all work that's being done. So can I turn it over to you, Randy, and I'll just drive through the slides here?
Sure, that works for me. Thank you, and good evening again. Just to give a couple of highlights of some, some of our successes, some of our challenges, some of our plans in motion around distance learning, we did share this at the work session about a week ago, but to just review it with the board again and the community as well. So one of our exciting silver linings to this whole work is that collaboration among teachers continues to grow. We have elementary teachers as an example that meet across the district every Friday. Our K teachers meet, our first grade teachers meet, our second grade teachers meet, et cetera. And the amount of collaboration that has occurred with this challenge has been absolutely amazing, and we want to, we want to define ways to support that level of collaboration moving forward, ensure we have legs under the table so that we can continue to grow that, because we know that the power in improving Edina Public Schools exists through how we work together and how we're pulling in the same direction. May 1st and 4th. Uh, May 1st and 4th was designated as professional learning days by Governor Walz and our commissioner. And so we put together a plan around um, support for our teachers and some of that involved um, teachers having some time to reflect, refine and to plan. And so it was reflecting upon what has worked and what hasn't worked, refining lessons for the end of the year, and then planning for those lessons and planning for end of school activities, end of year activities and for closure to their classes or to their grade level content. Um, we also offered a Minnesota Distance Learning Summit and Sean Beverson was key in organizing this along with some other folks from around the state of Minnesota. What was awesome about this summit is that it was developed in two weeks. Um, Edina was at the center of it. We had teachers from across the metro of this state. We had Edina staff present amongst other staff in the state. We had people across the state of Minnesota participate, people in the country participated and people across the world participated in this event that was co-developed by Edina Public Schools. And I'm sure Sean or uh, Steve, if he is here, may be able to speak more to that as well. But I think about 14,000 different adults touched that website by Monday, by the second day. Um, so it got a lot of traction. And I know that Sean has also met with the commissioner to discuss how we could continue collaborating and producing some distance learning opportunities for staff across the state of Minnesota. Um, many virtual summer PD opportunities have been developed and have been sent to teachers. All of our professional learning for the summer through at least August 15th will be virtual. Um, we are continuing to uh, support rituals. Our media specialists are continuing to support reading in so many ways in the work that they're doing. And again, if Steve is present, he can jump in and share some of that as well. Uh, our plans are being finalized around grading. We'll talk, uh, we talked in our work session this evening about that, but in a few more minutes, we can um, reiterate our proposal around grading and end of year. We are also working on logistics and details to do room cleanouts and to pack student materials and to deliver or have families pick up materials for the summer or to drop off materials that they have in their possession. And so we are, we are quickly organizing plans around that for the rest of the year. Some successes and challenges and plans in motion, successes at the um, early childhood to grade five level, staff and students connecting virtually, uh, wide reports of increased collaboration, I mentioned already, um, staff familiar with the foundational learning platforms of Seesaw and Schoology. And we have robust implementation of those programs now, whereas before, um, we were working toward that, but it wasn't at such a deep level as it is now. And a lot of resiliency in our staff and our students and our administrators um, being built. Challenges, kids need that in-person support and they're not always getting enough of that. There is fatigue being experienced by families. There is fatigue being experienced by teachers. And uh, we're trying to work on some clever ways to continue to celebrate um, those things that are going well. We've been developing um, videos uh, for end of year. Uh, we have postcards that have been sent to uh, students from teachers and from administrators across the district. I think to date, over 8,000 postcards have been um, completed and or mailed out to our students across the district, um, continuing to encourage them to stick in there. Summer PD lessons learned. Uh, we will be pulling teacher teams together to take summer, um, to take lessons learned from this process in the spring and to apply it into what they do starting next fall. And we're starting to think about what does next fall look like and we have some task forces that are working on that. Terms of middle school, um, students continuing to make great connections with not only teachers but other support staff in the building that they may not have worked with as frequently. Uh, teachers doing great work. Uh, teachers leveraging um, lots of moments to create project and assignments that maybe have an authentic flair to them, something that um, they're being pushed to create. And this is an innovative time. And so it's an opportunity to do some things a little bit differently than how we've done them before. Some of our challenges are, we still have varying levels of engagement. It's difficult to connect and reach with some families who just have, there's too much stress in life and they just can't balance it all. So those are still challenges. Uh, knowing exactly what is happening outside of school and what those challenges are is certainly difficult for us, uh, but we'll continue to work on that. And um, you know, some kids don't join those synchronous situations even when we have them because there are things that are um, happening outside of school and, and we can't control that. At the middle school level, we're, we're planning for a pickup, drop-off extravaganza, just like the elementary level. Uh, they're working on fifth grade transitions, eighth grade farewells, um, and some type of end of year synchronous experience and um, figuring out what do those plans look like for next fall and what are some potential options. At the high school level, if you go a little bit further forward, John? Thank you. Um, ABA stands for Attendance-Based Assignments. And certainly, Attendance-Based Assignments are creating um, data that provide for family connection intervention. Tell us who is engaged and who is not engaged and then the school can follow up with that appropriately. Definitely uh, new levels of creativity and innovation from our high school teachers has been fabulous. Um, flexibility, choice, post-secondary preparation for kids. There's lessons in this that will provide opportunity for us to think differently about what education looks like moving forward. Certainly challenges, again, endurance for staff and students, kind of a common theme, K-12, students longing for more face time. This is a human business. We got into it because we love humans and it's hard not to see our humans, especially our younger humans. Um, assessment and feedback is really challenging. We are not where we need to be in terms of how we do assessment. I, I think our teachers are trying to provide feedback on a regular basis and it's deep and it's thorough. But how we assess learning um, is definitely a growth area for us and probably for many districts in this situation. Plans in motion around commencement still, um, framing best practices in distance learning. We have work to do around um, what that looks like moving forward. And then contingency planning for summer and fall, or maybe it's pathway planning for summer and fall for where we're headed next. And with that, I'll turn it back to John to talk about uh, some of the work ChartWells has been doing.
All right. Uh, uh, ChartWells continues to provide uh, breakfast and lunches to um, system. Here's some pictures of that happening. Um, I love the t-shirt. Plan A for the kids, Plan B, there is no Plan B. And um, we began serving meals on March 16th. Um, and we are currently, um, as of May 7th, we had uh, breakfast uh, for bus routes, uh, delivering at 7,178, curbside, um, 6,793, and then total meals was 28,094. So um, we continue to provide food to those who are in need of that. Um, I'm gonna turn it over to Julie at this point, who can give some more data related to the meal fund.
Sure. Thank you. Um, so um, as you guys know, I've been um, helping with the food procurement for this meal fund COVID um, response effort. That's been this big partnership. Um, one of the things that I wanted to let you know is that we've actually, this was last week, um, this update, but we have now hit over $100,000, which is an incredible um, testament to our community and the effort that has gone into um, really rallying around our families that are in need right now. So um, I wanted to mention that because at this point, the meal fund is going to um, no longer be soliciting funds for this COVID effort. We feel pretty confident. Um, and the feedback has been pretty confident that we can sustain the model that we're using um, for quite some time. And so um, if anyone is interested in donating, um, the Edina Education Fund um, is one place that is going to be supporting all the, I mean, a lot of different needs that are going to be identified through the district, literacy support, mental health support, um, Edina Give and Go, um, another place that um, anyone who's interested in donating can go to. And then also the partners that we've been working with for this effort, both the Share and Story and Veep, um, both local um, food shelf and food supply um, um, partners and nonprofits in the area that have been just phenomenal for our entire community, out in Edina and outside of Edina. Um, so I just wanted to let you guys know that from a financial standpoint. From a food sta, um, um, from a food standpoint, um, we hit 20,000 individual meals um, that went out this morning. Um, so I think that is a huge, um, it, it's a little um, mind-blowing to think of that number. Um, but we have um, the number of households that we're delivering to is increasing some. Um, pickup and to pick up at the different Valley View and middle school, those numbers are increasing. So we're seeing that need um, tick up um, as this kind of pandemic continues. And so um, I feel really fortunate to be part of a group that is helping to make this a, a big difference. So um, I wanted to also just say, you know, in addition to Ed Fund, Give and Go and the Meal Fund, um, Edina Public Schools, you guys have been, um, the staff has been phenomenal, Transportation, David White, I think you're still on the call, um, and uh, Food Services, Dan Hutchinson and um, the facilities, the buildings and helping us maintain, um, being able to be in there to pack all the stuff and then also community ed and helping with managing the volunteers. So um, I sped through that pretty quickly, but um, it's, it's a great um, community effort and can show what we can do when we all step up. So I think that's it, unless anyone has any questions on that piece. Anyone questions?
Okay. Um, School and Child Care update. You can see how our numbers have been slowly increasing uh, for Tier One and Tier Two um, uh, workers through this. And you can see the totals to date from March 19th to May 11th. Um, uh, summer programming, we are still in um, the midst of planning that. Got a meeting again tomorrow. Um, I think Chris alluded to that, talking about how do we um, uh, invite, if we have to invite more students into targeted services. Um, we've got some interesting um, direction from the state that we need to process. We have the state saying that we can um, open up our buildings for summer school, but we need to keep it at a one to nine ratio, which is very, very difficult to staff and also expensive. But we're trying to get some more guidance from the state on that. Um, we still are planning distance learning to start in June for our um, Success Center and um, maybe some face-to-face if we can, starting 1st of August. We'll just have to wait to see what uh, direction we get from the state. Um, all the indications from the state says that we will be social distancing through the summer as well as this, that is our current information as it stands now. An extended school year, um, they are allowed to follow uh, targeted services proposal, but uh, they um, also have got some uh, some direction from the state that can only be distance learning. So we have some things to tease out from our direction from um, the Minnesota Department of Education. So um, that gives an update. Uh, Randy alluded in his presentation um, uh, earlier uh, around distance learning, um, and how we've broken our work down. We do have a data team that's uh, beginning to uh, figure out what surveys, focus groups, um, how can we collect data from our current um, distance learning that we're, so we can learn from it, so we can start planning, so we can start thinking ahead for the fall. Um, it may seem like we're entering into the summer, we get a chance to breathe. Um, we will figure out how to get a chance to breathe, but at the same time, we're gonna have to get ready for next uh, next fall. And uh, we are planning for a hybrid um, for distance learning and some sort of in-building. So we're gonna figure out how we um, can um, do that. Um, that way, by looking at that hybrid, we can, we know how to open up a building. Um, we'll need to figure out how to improve our distance learning. How do we get students engaged? You heard about the discussion on evaluation early work session. So we are working on two fronts, one on distance learning, one on um, operational, more in-building um, types of activities. So more to come, uh, lots of planning going on and an absolutely great staff to think and problem solve with uh, through this. Um, so I want to extend my appreciation to uh, to the staff and to all the leaders in Edina. Uh, and um, it's, it's great to be a partner with them as we figure out what is best for Edina kids next fall. Um, and also want to extend my appreciation for the school board, helping us think through um, some of these details. So that's it for um, uh, distance learning update. I'll provide more as things happen in June and July.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Schultz. I know we um, already had this presentation in a work session, but I thought it was important that the community, um, a broader audience got to see it. Um, but I just wanted to open it up to see if any board members have any comments um, on it. Um, I just wanted to make one quick comment. Um, I just wanted to caution us as a district not to equate attendance with student engagement. When we talk about attendance, we talk about a level of engagement. And I think that to me, attendance in distance learning equates more that it's child or student got their assignment done. And engagement to me means a much broader level of interest and attention and encompasses a lot of social emotional measures that we can't necessarily gauge in a distance learning environment. So I just think that we need to be a little careful when we equate those two things as a system. Um, and that we're working hard to come up with ways that we can actually measure how our students are engaging, engaging from a more social and emotional perspective with their assignments and with their um, enjoyment and excitement with learning. So, I appreciate you have taken all the work that you guys are doing. So. All right. We're going to move to our action items. And our first one is intermediate District 287 Long-Term Facilities Maintenance. Um, do I have a motion to approve District 287 Long-Term Facilities Maintenance?
Removed.
Is there a second?
Right now.
Do we have any questions for John Tulp about the District 287 Long-Term Facilities Maintenance?
No questions.
Nope.
Good. All righty. We'll now vote by roll call to approve District 287 Long-Term Facilities Maintenance.
Allenberg?
Aye.
Fox?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Michelson?
Aye.
Shaw?
Aye.
Welland Friedman?
Aye.
Uh, District 287 Long-Term Facilities Maintenance is approved. Um, we are going to move on to iPad lease agreements. Do I have a motion to approve the Apple iPad lease agreement?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, do we have any questions for Mr. Butner about, Director Butner about the lease agreement? Okay, we'll now vote by roll call to approve the Apple iPad lease agreement.
Allenberg? Fox?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Michelson?
Aye.
Shaw?
Aye.
Welland Friedman?
Aye.
The Apple iPad lease agreement is approved. We'll now move on to our reporting recommendations. Do I have a motion to approve the end-of-year grade reporting recommendations?
Removed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Do we have any questions about this topic?
Speak in English.
Yes. And I wanted to mention that um, Randy, John and I talked during our break and we are proposing adding a bullet point in the elementary school section that states um, teachers will provide a strength and opportunity for growth during the summer. Well, that will be added to the um.
Recommendation.
The recommendation.
Thank you for doing that. Thank you for doing that.
Thank you. That's fantastic.
Randy, that makes sense to you, right?
Yep. I think we're good.
All right.
Thank you.
Yeah. Um, does anyone have any comments on this?
No.
Okay. We'll now vote by roll call to approve the end-of-year grade reporting recommendations.
Allenberg?
Aye.
Fox?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Michelson?
Aye.
Shaw?
Aye.
Welland Friedman?
Aye.
The end-of-year grade reporting recommendations are approved. We're now going to move to our policy review, uh, for policies for, or policy approvals for Part 39 and 530. Do I have a motion to approve policy? a motion to approve Policy 439?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Do we have any questions on Policy 439? Okay, we will now vote by, vote by roll call to approve Policy 439.
Allenberg?
Aye.
Fox?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Michelson?
Aye.
Shaw?
Aye.
Wallen Friedman?
Aye.
Policy 439 is approved. Do I have a motion to approve Policy 530?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions on Policy 530? Okay, we will now vote by roll call to approve Policy 530.
Allenberg?
Aye.
Fox?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Michelson?
Aye.
Shaw?
Aye.
Wallen Friedman?
Aye.
Policy 530 is approved. In our information section, the only thing I wanted to mention was that we, we're going to have our Human Resources Committee name changed this month, but we moved it to next month, so it would come with the policy update. So we weren't doing the name change before the policy update, but I wanted the board to know that, that HR committee could, in a governance committee fashion, we might work on something broader in scope. So I just wanted to let the board know that, just in case between today and the next work session, I can't think of anything off the top of my head, but I just, like I said, I'm a rule follower. So I just wanted people to know that. And I don't have anything else pertaining to the information section, so I'm going to move to announcement and see if any chairs and committees have any announcements they would like to make.
The DGN Learning just covered the items that we actually went over in today's meeting, so there is no update other than what we already had today.
Okay. Anything else?
Do you want to ask the senior thing?
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, so John and I just wanted to close out the meeting by briefly addressing our seniors and the class of 2020. And do you wanna go first, or?
I'll have you.
Okay, all right. So we just wanted, this is our last board meeting before we have our graduation day. I don't speak for the board, but I think I can confidently say that our entire board shares my sentiment to say that I'm so proud of our senior class and all of the accomplishments that you have as Edina Public School students. You routinely make our entire city shine, so I wanted to thank you. And while you are all justified in being angry and upset about not being able to have a traditional graduation ceremony, please try not to let it define this moment. Let yourself celebrate what you have accomplished, and please let your mom and dad take as many photos as they want of you in your cap and gown. So thank you, and congratulations from the school board.
And just to add to that, just wanna shout out Transportation that set up the buses and took this picture for our, our class. And I really echo, and it's hard to follow what Erica just said, but we are gonna work with the seniors to make this day, May 31st, a real special day. In fact, tomorrow, I'm going to the City Council to accept a proclamation that May 31st is Class of 2020 Day. So we're gonna be delivering diplomas to families' homes, and seniors, make sure you just be patient with all the pictures. You really deserve this recognition.